It's six thirty on the fall of meeting to order. Shasbury School Board, October eleventh. We'll open up with citizens' comments, and citizens have comments. Holly?
I'm Holly Van, Shasbury resident. I was just looking at the student enrollment forms. Is this information correct?
There was a corrected one. Did you, there was a corrected one?
Well, there's September of two thousand seventeen and October. And the count is two forty-two and two thirteen, current. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Looking at both in here, I'm trying to.
Yeah.
So one has, one has two fifteen for this year and one has two thirteen, October or September. So, yeah, that's close to correct.
Yep.
So what are you doing about that?
Well, we just, what are we doing about it?
Working on that? You don't have to have, we don't have them die all the time.
I mean, I think some families moved.
Yeah?
We had a large sixth grade of forty-two kids graduating. We had a small kindergarten come in. That's a large part of, we did have some families move over this summer.
Largest part is the smallest, the smallest grade there is the kindergarten class coming in.
If you look at the sixth graders that left is forty-two, and the class that came in was twenty-seven.
Okay. So if you're looking at... Well, just with, with those twenty-seven and the eleven before, that's thirty-eight children. And since you're maybe looking at that, the special ed numbers, to me, are alarming. At the end of the school year, there were forty-two, and now the count is down to sixteen, which is wonderful. Parents have taught the children out of the assignment.
I have, I have twenty-six.
I have twenty-six.
I mean, I'm sorry, twenty-six.
Like I said, there was a large class that left and a small class that came in. And it's the start of the school year, so kids might not have been identified yet too.
So what is the reduction of finance, financial impact to the community with that drop?
Well, I, I had asked that question last night before we started the meeting, and I looked at the twenty-seven left students, and I picked twelve thousand as a number, and I come up with the three, three hundred and twenty-four thousand. Is that correct, Bill Jeff?
Three hundred and twenty-four thousand, which year?
Well, we had from the two forty-two to the two fifteen.
Yep.
I, I took that number, there's twenty-seven, and if you figure, I know the tuition's more than twelve thousand, so I just took the twelve thousand times twenty-seven, I get three hundred and twenty-four thousand less monies.
Coming in.
Right.
Yeah.
So that, okay, I just, I just wanted to make that.
But the census goes over time, it's not just one year.
Right.
Yeah.
I get that, but I, I just, we're going into a budget season here pretty quick, that we're gonna take some enormous hits. That's first one, because it's already there. And then we, this Ag forty-six stuff, which I hope people vote down, but that's my opinion. And it's, it's gonna be brutal, but just my opinion. Thank you.
So what I would like, what I'm asking is, would that reduce thirty-six children in special ed with accommodations? What is the financial impact, or reduction of financial impact to the community?
We'll know what's going on next week.
There's staff, there's...
When budgets come down.
Well, there's time, there's time samplings, and I'm sure that it's been looked into very...
But you, you, you said...
It said thirty-two, I see thirty-two.
I see, yeah.
You had two hundred and forty-two.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Or, I'm sorry, forty-two.
Yeah.
In special ed. Now the number is what?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Okay. Sixteen, I'm sorry, sixteen. I, I'd like to know the financial reduction of impact to the community.
I mean, it's...
You don't have to answer me now, I'm sure something really would have to work out.
Is the specialty provide services for the specialty?
But there's many accommodations, staff.
All the special ed comes out of the SU budget.
Absolutely. But I, but I'm asking you, that, if I, you could give me that number. Thank you.
What are we saying, just because I'm trying to learn this too? So the, ask, the, the special ed budget comes from the SU?
You can't compare one special ed student to another special ed student. If you have a severely high-needs special ed student, they can be very expensive. And if you have a special ed student who needs speech once a week, they're very...
Inexpensive.
Inexpensive. So you can't look at one's, you know, this is looking at the number of students who are getting services. So you can't compare, you know, apples and oranges, comparing all these different fruits in a bowl. So it's hard to get that number.
So the, the net, the net difference for the community is gonna be rather minimal because the money coming from special ed isn't funding other things in the building. Is that right, or not?
No, it's only covering...
It's only covering the special ed?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm just...
It could be, you know, less or it could be more. It depends on the students and, you know...
For an example, we, we used to have a student for the Perkins School for the Blind. That was like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for that one student. But that's separated out in the budget, you would see, see that. Maybe ten others wouldn't be, but they would be on a different line item, would be special ed, and they don't say what they are, but they just, they do it. Anyway.
Yeah, you don't know until you see the end of your numbers.
Right, yes.
Can I just adjust that a little? I'd like to ask for a time sampling sheet, that, that will...
Well, if you, if you need something...
Explain it all.
Just, all you gotta do is check with SU and they'll go.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
Because they have all the information there.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have a, I'm Phil Holland, and I haven't been to a school board meeting for twenty-five years when my daughter was attending the school. What brings me here tonight is an article in the Bennington Banner two or three weeks ago. I'm sure you saw it. It had to do with standardized test results for various Vermont towns, including Shasbury. I guess the results weren't so good, I didn't think they were. Measuring proficiency. Are you familiar with, I'm sure you are, the article and the results?
Yep.
I was surprised that, what, fifty percent or more of the students who were tested in this school were judged not to be proficient according to the standards. Is that correct?
Yep.
I don't know what your agenda is tonight, but I hope that's on the top of it, because that's a very shocking circumstance. I don't think that was the case. There weren't standardized tests twenty-five years ago. But I recollect the school having had a good reputation, and it provided a good elementary education to my daughter. I'm worried that we're no longer doing that, and I'm wondering what's going on. That's a very alarming circumstance. I mean, if you had a factory and fifty percent of your production didn't pass inspection, wouldn't you make that the first priority of any meeting and every meeting until you change things?
The, I, it can be many, many different, this is my own opinion, can be many different reasons for that to happen. I think a lot of it may be the different influx of different families into the area.
I know it's a very complicated question.
They may be different than they were twenty-five years ago, and things like that. And it gives you a different gradient to go by. I wonder if we, Jeff, could you do a...
We are, actually, next month, next month, we do our annual, it's called a report card of the district, where we'll be discussing that very topic. And myself and Laura Bujo, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, will be doing a presentation around that and what we, the steps we plan to take to remedy that.
Do you request the presence of the Principal of the School, for instance, at such a meeting?
I'm the Principal of the School.
You're the Principal, very nice to meet you.
I'll be there, I'll be, I'll be presenting with Laura Bujo for that meeting.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. And when is that meeting, next month's school board?
Next month's, next school board meeting, yep.
Great, well...
Second Wednesday, yep.
I, I did hear what the Secretary, the Under-Secretary of Education for Vermont on Vermont Edition interviewed about, because this isn't unique to Shasbury, it's statewide. But it seems to me in Shasbury, we are a small town with a small school where we can know every student and educate every student individually, and how can we fail, as it appears we're doing? Half of them, that's a, that's a question that I'll be interested to hear the answers to, if you have any. And we can defer consideration of what I've just asked until next month. I'm glad you're gonna be...
Thank you, Jeff, thank you. We'll have an agenda next month.
It's, it's already there, it's in the plans.
Okay. Ventilation project update, where are we speaking?
So Hayden was here Monday, we had the cold days, they're here all day Monday, did quite a bit of more ventilation work, pumping into the classrooms with the, with the duct work. They're gonna come next Wednesday, we have a half-day next Wednesday for In-service Day, they're gonna come again next Wednesday and do another good half-day of work. From all indications, they're, you know, they're plugging along as best they can with school being in session, and they hope to, again, hope to be done fairly soon before the, it gets too cold. And, I mean, everything can run right now as they decide for ventilation, he can run, everything can run. It's just the ventilation won't get going before, before winter and we start closing up the windows.
Yep, because now you, now you still have the windows open.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yep.
And if they got too cold, we're still monitoring rooms?
I'll, I'll monitor again in the winter, but the, the results don't change, you know, until we get new ventilation. And that's what I'm really curious about, is get a new ventilation there, then monitor the rooms again, and see the difference that the new ventilation system will, will show compared to not having one. Yeah.
Excuse me, Ed, is there an agenda that is published beforehand?
Yes.
Can you tell us what's coming up, or is there a piece of paper I missed?
Oh, use this on the internet, the SPS website, the agenda. Let's see, I think you've got actually an extra one.
Thanks.
And also, if you want, it emailed to you as well, you know, you can always, you know, request it, because some people are on the packet.
Request it through the SU, I think.
Yeah.
Request it through the superintendent's office.
Do you do an annual report card then?
Yep, we do it for the past several years.
Thanks to this wonderful Cat TV service, I could look up last year's report card, for instance.
Sure, you could, yep, right around the same time of year. I think it was Septe, I think it was October of last year now, I remember.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, Treasuries Report.
I'll move it.
Second.
I'll second.
Discussion?
This is the revised one, right?
The revised one, right.
One thirty-nine.
One thirty-one.
Yep.
Two sixty-three oh five.
Any more discussion? I have a motion, we have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Okay. Budget Status Report. Motion?
I'm, I'm moving, I have a couple questions.
Yeah, you'll get it, you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay. Looking at the aftermarket programs, I mean, Jeff can tell me this anyway. There's on page three, there's the after-school program, it's forty-three oh eight, and on... Then on page seven, there's the after-school program, eighteen thousand three oh five, gives me the twenty-two six thirteen. And on the, I get on the computer on the PTO Activities Fund, Shasbury Elementary, there's twelve thousand eight seventy-eight seventy-two. Does that monies all go to the same programs? Okay, so I'm just wondering, the PTO Activities Fund, is that just for, you're bringing people in for, if you have a...
So like Big Chuck Knigley?
Thank you, I forget what you call it.
Any event spots about the PTO, that's where, that's in our activity account.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, is the other, the one for eighteen thousand, does, is busing extra on that one?
Which page you went for that one?
I'm on page, page eight.
Page eight.
While I'm square, I've got my figures here.
Oh.
I just, the, this twenty-two six thirteen, does that include the busing? Because I would assume that'd be busing for the summer camp.
Yeah, page eight, Frank. I'm trying to forget where you're at, Frank.
Well, the school program.
Hang on, page eight.
That's page seven, but I, all I did...
At the bottom of page seven, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did my figure. Salary, like contracted services, supplies for after-school program?
Yeah.
That's, so the contracted services and supplies has to do with either paying instructor for after-school program?
Okay.
And then...
So that's not the camp that we take?
No, 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 that's, no.
That's supper.
Yes.
And how much, and if we add that to that, how much is that trip, just off the cuff?
Where do we put the camp, do you remember where we put the camp?
Is that seventeen thousand, I think, or something?
The camp was on page three.
The camp? No, it wasn't that much.
Is it? Page three?
I don't think it was that much.
Well, yeah, so actually, for some reason, it's, it's a heading on page three.
Okay, yeah.
It's calling it a function for the after-school program, but the, the total that you're seeing there is actually for summer camp.
Yeah, okay, so that's where we send the kids down to New York State. Okay, all right, that's what I thought, I was...
How was where?
Where, where's the camp?
Here.
No, no.
Oh, you're going Nature's Classroom.
Thank you, I couldn't think of the name of it, so, stupid as a stupid does, I couldn't think of the name, but anyway.
Nature's Classroom would be in the field trip line.
Okay.
Yes, for transportation and for...
All right, so that includes the transportation.
Yes, yes, that's all been put in there for the last couple of years now.
Okay, all right, that's...
Along with the Mount Pelear trip, yep.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Anything else than the Budget Report? All those in favor?
Aye.
I propose...
Put that in a minute, Richard.
Yep, yes, yes. Depends on Cat TV for that one.
Oh, wait, but televised anyway.
Yes, right.
Okay.
This is, I don't know, approval of Comcast donation.
That's, that's me. So as, as the Board Mayor may remember, Comcast has come the last two springs and done their Comcast Care Days here, and they've done some different work around the school, they painted the gym a couple of springs ago, they did a lot of yard work with new mulch and stuff this, this spring. The gentleman I'm working with, he said they have a budget for this every year, and this, this spring, they didn't spend all the money in their budget, and in return, they want to donate the rest of the budget back to the school. And per our policy, we need, I need to have the Board approval to accept that donation to the school. It was for seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-four cents. So that's a massive force approval to accept that donation from Comcast, there's no strings attached, it's a, it's basically, there's donating the rest of the budget back to us as we, as we see.
I'll move it.
Second.
Pretty great discussion.
Yeah, it is. You know, we're just putting that account that you could use for the kids somehow?
Yeah, absolutely, oh, absolutely.
Like the PTO or the...
Yeah, or activity count, yeah, yeah.
Activity count.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, so it'll go toward the kids, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we've got it voted on. You didn't vote?
Yeah.
You didn't vote yet? Oh, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Got me confused. Okay. Nine-one-one Compliance Grant Program.
So I, I got this on the agenda before I, I got an email from Renee on this. So this was something that we looked into last year, I actually made Ed aware a bit, but it was kind of late in the game before we knew. As of right now, we're not in compliance with nine-one-one. They call the number here, and it doesn't always say that it's coming to Shasbury School. It's, it's something we need to rectify fairly soon, they're not, you know, it's definitely we had to fix right away, but we know we need a phone system as well. The phone system's not the best here, it's very old and does not work at twenty degrees below zero, we found out a couple winters ago. And it's something that I've talked with Central Office, getting a quote, what a new phone system would cost. So this grant pays for up to twenty-five thousand dollars, or half of what a phone system might cost, depending on it, a matching grant. But Renee has been talking with Frank Barnes, our Technologies...
Director of Educational...
Director of Educational Technology, and a number of schools may be interested in joining this grant, doing it as an SU. So I brought this on the agenda, wanted to make you guys aware of it, we have until November to apply for it. We have to commit half the money if we're, if they're gonna give it to us, so that's why I gave it to the Board, that we may have to commit whatever the cost is, half of it, and they'll cover the other half. But with that said, if Frank's working on it with the other schools in the district, we may want to hold off and then let him pull those pieces together with the rest of the district, and see if we can get it together with them. It is something, the phone system is something we really need to look at. If it doesn't happen this way, I was gonna propose it during budget season, that we look at a new phone system. We did get a quote last year, what approximately a new phone system would cost here, which is roughly around forty-one thousand dollars at that time. That's just, that's just the nine-one-one. I've talked with Dick Mulaney, who's our Safety and Security Coordinator in the district now, and he agrees our new phone system is probably something we should look at, just for safety reasons. Nine-one-one is, is recommending that every, every room has a phone in it for nine-one-one purposes, so if you call nine-one-one, you know it's coming from this direct room. So that's something we don't have right now, we have just a handful of phones in the, in the school as it is. Not to mention, they don't always work as well as I'd like. So I'm happy to table it until I find out more from Frank about what the rest of the district is doing. I think we have until the end of November to apply for it, and...
Yeah, I think we should table it, table it until next month.
Yep.
I have a motion to table.
So move.
I'll second it.
And I'll work with Frank and Renee and see if we can get in place for next month's board meeting, and see if I'll need your approval for, for...
All those in favor of tabling it?
For next month.
Until next, until November. Okay. Consent agenda. Motion?
So move.
Have a second?
No, I'll second.
Questions?
Just have questions on the warrants. I'm on warrant two thousand six, on page thirteen, and it's a Servpro line, it's for twenty-seven hundred dollars. And it's basically just a comment. I mean, I've seen, over the years, we used to have, our custodians used to do this stuff, I'm seeing now it's becoming a new item in the budget. So maybe we look at that, and we used to do all the stuff ourselves, and just keep an eye on that stuff, because that's what blows your budget out of proportion, or things like that, so. Just a comment.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, yeah, vote. All those in favor of the warrants?
Aye.
That includes the minutes. All those opposed?
Wait, the minutes. I just wanted one, one quick correction on the one for September thirteenth.
Yep.
It's not William Penny, it's John Penny, correct? Minor, I know, but...
Yeah. I called Moreno Neal in the last set of minutes, I called it Moreno Sullivan. So, so, so...
It's line, it's line thirty-one.
Okay, in the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, uh, thirteenth. September thirteenth, line thirty-one.
Yep.
Okay, we'll pass that as the correction, you got that correction.
Yep.
Renee, did you have something now?
They're circulating right now.
Oh, right there, okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Policies, we have a bunch of them.
Doing these one-on-one, or do you want to do them all as a lot?
I do them all as a lot, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, we can do them all as a lot for it.
You want to comment on anything, Scott, you need to draw them out of committee?
Look, in reviewing my notes, most of these were no changes required by audits and other things that were being done with, you know, Family Medical Leave Act, HIV, bloodborne, we were basically staying in line with what the state was requiring of us, or what, or changes within the, within the SU. Nothing major, nothing sweeping, all of these have been sent back to, or many of these have been sent back to the SU for adoption, so all straightforward.
I just read the numbers in if you don't. Okay, let's have a motion to accept all of them at once?
So these would be, just to clarify...
I'll make the motion to accept all of them at once.
Okay.
I'll second accept all, okay.
You still want to read the number?
You should, yes.
Yeah, sure.
So this, this is in regard to policy number eleven hundred, fixed asset, thirty-one fifteen, prevention of conflict and interest procurement, forty-one twenty-one, travel reimbursement, forty-three twenty-seven, family and medical leave, fifty-four eleven, comprehensive HIV and bloodborne pathogens, and lastly, thirty-one hundred, transportation.
All those in favor of adopting those?
Aye.
Carried.
Okay, Tillner Fund Request. Is that you, Jeff?
Where we at?
Tillner Fund Request.
Is that out?
No. Well, that was on a...
I was gonna bring that next month.
Not gonna say, I think that was under the...
Oh, that's a, that amended one? That's on the amended one, amended agenda?
One second. I was gonna say, I thought I saw something.
Yeah, I was gonna bring that next month, I don't know how they get on there.
Well, they, they sent in, they sent out an amended agenda.
Okay.
And that's where...
I did, I did ask Karen if it was too late to put it on, and she thought it was, and I said I could bring it next month, so I don't have, I don't have the request with me now, so we'll table it next month.
Table it, okay, so, I think what happened is, she mailed these out, and then she, then she emailed it, the email came out with amended one.
Okay. Yeah, I like to table that.
So we'll table that. Do you have a motion to table Tillner Fund?
And what, that was a, okay, so there was Tillner Fund, you were going to make a request, table it next...
Yes. Ended up in a digital copy that got sent out to us, well, it's now on the hard copy.
Didn't get in the hard copy.
And Jeff's not...
Parents won't table it.
Fran made the motion, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, tabled. Facilities, did we hit part of it?
No, no, no action items for facilities, or personnel.
No, no, facility, okay, okay. And that brings us to the principal.
So, yeah, several number of things. I want to commend the Shasbury community and especially our kiddos. We did a penny war last month to help hurricane victims all over the country these days, now it's not just one place anymore. The Shasbury students raised over nine hundred dollars with our penny war to support these victims. The money was donated to the American Red Cross through Hannaford supermarkets, who will match it dollar for dollar through their community fund. I also want to extend a thank you to Hannaford, because it was many more coins than I anticipated, and so I went to the coin return machine at Hannaford, which charges a fee, but Hannaford donated fifty dollars back to us to cover that fee of that, of that CoinStar machine, so I want to thank them for that as well. But it was, it was a huge success, I mean, we had a shopping cart full of coins that we put through that machine that Saturday morning.
You didn't do that, huh?
I did do that. My daughter did that. Jen was there, she's out. My daughter did that. So it was, it was very successful. Kids had a great time with it. I think fourth grade won the penny war. Fourth grade won the penny war. They had a little ice cream party to celebrate, they're very excited about that. So a few other things, at September twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, our special teachers met with each grade level to collaborate and identify ways that they can use their classes, art, P E, music, library media, and integrate the classroom curriculum into their special classes. So they spent a day and a half meeting with every single grade level teacher, learning about the curriculum and identifying ways that they can then incorporate that curriculum into their specials. So that was pretty exciting. Everybody I talked to was very excited to have those meetings, especially special teachers. They feel, you know, more collaborative with those classroom teachers now. Our assessment window for fall assessment is coming to an end on October twentieth. Students in K to two will complete the fast bridge assessment in reading and math. And students in three through six will complete the math test and get in those same areas, reading and math. They're also, teachers are also completing a social emotional survey for every student. And as always, this data is going to be used as a benchmarking for this fall, as teachers make goals for the future for each kiddo, get into the tier instruction for MTSS system. The school leadership team will be using that information as we create our, our plan going forward this year and what areas we need, we need to improve on and get some different strategies and tools around that. And finally, last week I attended a training with a number of staff from around the SU, directed by the state to facilitate integrated field review from the Agency of Education. So the Education Department has requested, or has dictated that they're going to do a field review for all the schools in the, in the state around school quality standards. And I'm part of the team in the SU that's going to be, one, hosting a team that comes here and two, going to another district and reviewing that district as well. And that's two days of training, we're involved around what that's going to look like. The team is going to come here November seventh. They'll spend the afternoon, a small part of that team will spend the afternoon here at Shasbury School. They'll do some observations, they'll get a tour from some of our, our students. They'll interview some students, some parents and some staff members. And then we'll get a list of recommendations and accommodations that are, around school quality standards moving forward. It's not meant to be an assessment or accountability, it's meant to be for your information. Here's what we saw evidence of, here's where you may want to look at getting more evidence for and improving on. So the training was well-formed, it was, it was interesting to see everybody from classroom teachers to administrators, to district level administrators, all in one place, looking at the same goals and school quality standards. So I'm looking forward to that visit and seeing what we get from that. That's all I have.
Okay. The only thing I had is, I think we had a nice meeting last night of, with thirty-some people present, right, Fran?
Thirty-five.
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 Not my number.
On the, on the Act forty-six. And it was very informal, informed, not informed, informational. I think basically from that, we're going to have also, I talked to Tim Scoggins and we may have a letter to the editor, just giving it to people that are out to, that, people out there that weren't there and that still need some information. And I would just say, opposite of Fran, I'm supporting the Act forty-six.
I think they, I'll add to this, you know, the vote's November the seventh. At that point, you'll vote for the Articles Agreement. You know, we're going to try to streamline them into more simple texts because there's quite a bit of there. And at the same time, at the same election, you're going to vote for a new school board. If the Act forty-six pass, merger passes, you know, the new school board will start up sometime in January as well.
But just, just, this, this school board will still be in effect?
This school board will still be in effect until twenty nineteen.
Right.
Of June, end of June twenty nineteen, July first, twenty nineteen. You know, the new merger will either be, you know, go through with the Articles Agreements if they pass.